I'd like to welcome everyone here tonight. We are here for an informal public input session for the Richland 2 Board of Trustees, the 2023-2024 budget season. Anybody wishing to speak, you're welcome to come forward and address the board with any input you have for the upcoming budget season. Thank you. And we are concluding our budget input session for April 4, 2023. We had no participants today. Thank you. We will resume or start our general board meeting in just a few minutes. Thank you. I'd like to call to order the meeting, the Richland 2 Board of Trustees, April 4, 2023, regular board meeting. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Trapp.
I move to approve the agenda for the April 4, 2023, regular board meeting.
Is there a second? Is there a second to approve the agenda for the meeting? Yes, if you would like to, and if we'd like to have--
I'll second.
Okay, so the motion has been made by Mr. Trapp and seconded by Mrs. Nash. Is there any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Mrs. Washington.
Yes, I just want to make a comment that I'm disappointed to see that once again we have policies on here and that ESER was taken off of this as if policies are a, these policies are a priority. And while I do understand that we have dates that these need to be submitted, I'm going to make a request once more, as I requested before. If administration can please give us a list of the policies that are due by legislation so that we as a board can prioritize. I do not think it's fair for us to sit here and discuss these policies, and I understand this is going to be the first reading, but again, we need to get an update on the ESER funds, how they plan to be spent, and I do not think that that is, that these items are a priority. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Washington. Any more discussion?
I just want to say too, you know, I know we talked about like maybe doing a couple of these or like one of these, just because I don't, you know, we had talked about not getting the habit of being here at 10 o'clock at night. I don't think it's fair to anybody in this room to be here that late, so that's all I have to say in regard to that.
Thank you, Mrs. Nash. Any further discussion?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mrs. Porter.
So there's an item on the agenda. It was 14.3 receipt of legal advice regarding employee contracts.
Yes.
So my question for that item is, was that from the recommendation of administration that we received?
No, that was at the request of the board.
Okay.
Does that answer your question?
Just to clarify.
Yeah, yeah, it was at the request of the board. The board needed clarification and legal receipt regarding employee contracts. And I will take this opportunity to address Ms. Washington's concerns as well as Ms. Nash's. Last, when we left the meeting last week, I was under the impression from the board, and forgive me if I misunderstood, that it was important to get an attorney in here to talk about employee contracts and that everybody else, everything else was to be cleared from the agenda, to include ESER funds, which we were supposed to hear today but have been delayed. If you've looked at the draft agenda, are on the draft agenda for the April, is it the April 25 meeting, so they're on the next meeting. The three policies that remained on the agenda for today, because we had six on the former draft agenda, or six were proposed at the last meeting, the three that are on are time sensitive, and that's why they have remained on the agenda. So, you know, I appreciate the concerns. I apologize if I misunderstood the direction of the board last week when I was told that, you know, a discussion was needed over contracts to clear the rest of the agenda, but what remains on it, it's a pretty lean agenda, and that was the direction that I understood from the board. Thank you. Any further discussion? I'll call for the vote. All those in favor? Or actually, go ahead and vote electronically? So the vote is one, two, three. Three yes, two no, two not present, so the motion carries with a three yes, two no. May I have a motion to go into executive session? Excuse me?
It says motion fails.
I'm trying to understand, why would the motion fail if we've got five people here, the majority of the people, they're three yes? Okay, well, the, they're not present to vote, so they don't count. Three would be the majority. Can we ask someone, counsel?
Legal counsel.
Yeah. Do you have something to assist us with this? Thank you. So the motion would carry. Thank you. So the motion carries. Thank you. May I have a motion to go into executive session?
Madam Chair.
Mrs. Nash.
I move to convene an executive session for the purpose of discussing student admission requests into the district's adult education program, employment recommendations, and certified releases, apparent grievance, and an employee grievance.
Is there a second?
Second.
So the motion has been made by Mrs. Nash and seconded by Mr. Trapp to go into executive session for the topics mentioned. Is there any discussion? There's no discussion. Board members, please vote. So the vote is five yes, zero no, two not present, so the motion carries. May I have a motion to come back into exec, or to come out of executive session?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Trapp.
I move to adjourn executive session at 6:05 PM and resume public session.
Is there a second?
Second.
The motion has been made by Mr. Trapp and seconded by Dr. Scott to come out of executive session. Is there any discussion? There's no discussion. We'll wait for the motion to post. We'll wait for the motion to post. Is that correct, Mr. Trapp?
Yes.
Moving on, oops, excuse me, we've got to announce the vote. Getting a little bit ahead of myself. Excuse me? And the vote is six yes, zero no, one not present. Mrs. McFadden is not with us this evening. She will be, we expect her to join us a little bit later, so the motion carries. Moving on to item five, the inspirational moment and pledge of allegiance. Mrs. Nash.
I would like to, if all of you will please join me in welcoming Mrs. Kelsey Carter. This month is Military Child Month, so we are celebrating that all this month, and so we have Ms. Kelsey Carter with us along with some guests, special guests, and she is a dedicated member of the Richland Two family in the office of being our military family liaison, and she has devoted the last 25 years of her life to community advocacy work, higher education, and K-12 education. And having herself dealt with many deployments, several PCS moves, and extended TDYs, she understands firsthand the many challenges of military families that they have to endure and how crucial the role of the military community liaison is. So, Kelsey, please come on up, Ms. Carter, and all of our guests.
Thank you, Mrs. Nash, for inviting us to be here. Thank you, Tony, this evening to kick off celebrating the month of the Military Child. I have with me, well, as you can see, a lot of military families. This is going to be a large group of inspirational moment, but we're super excited. Go to the next slide, Tony. Yeah, everybody ready? Oh, I've got a remote, thank you. You told me that. Here we go. All right, okay. So, just a little bit, I know we just have a short period of time, so I want you to hear from some of these families. So I'll make my presentation really quick, but I do want to just give you some overviews on some of the things that we're doing for the month of April, which is the month of the Military Child. I have flanking me on the end Fred Henley, Mr. Fred Henley's the school liaison officer at Fort Jackson. You all see him every board meeting. He's an honorary member of the Richland Two family, but Fred and I work very closely together to support these families. And flanking me in the back is Dr. Grant, who's my supervisor. I'm housed in the Office of Diversity and Inclusion, Equity and Inclusion, and as you can see, the diversity behind me, we are very intentional about making sure that when these families land at Richland Two, that they feel like they belong and that they're included. Okay, so we're very intentional about that in our department. And also flanking is Mr. Michael Williams. Michael is one of, one of our MFLACs. We use a lot of acronyms, don't we, y'all? MFLAC is the Military Family Life Counselor, and we have them housed in several of our DODIA schools. He does incredible work counseling our families and our, Michael, right in the back, okay. So it takes a village, and we're all connected because, you know, we're family, right? Many of us have been stationed together. We were in Okinawa together, right? Yeah. So, but anyway, I just want to draw your attention to the board, just so you get the gist of just how serious we need to be at Richland Two. We represent about 20.5% of the state's number of students, military-connected students. 20.5% of students, 20.3% of military families, making us the largest military-connected district in the state. We're a proud Purple Star district that was bestowed upon us back in 2019. Many of you were there when the superintendent and the state superintendent bestowed that honor with us. Being a Purple Star district is something that we take very serious, right? Yeah, so, you know, folks know that we're committed to when these families get here that we know that we're going to take care of them to the best of our abilities. There are few bullets, bullet points here of some of the things that we've got going on. Obviously, our Spirit Week, we all get excited about our Spirit Week. I think Dawn McAdams is here. She's the only person that dyes her hair purple for Purple Up Day, so I always give her props. Thank you. She's, she's all in. So you see, our Spirit Week starts the week of the 24th. We end that with Purple Up Day tomorrow. We'll be down at the State House at the Proclamation Day, the state capitol, where the governor will declare April as month of the Military Child. And then we've got a lot of stuff going on at Fort Jackson. We've taken a group of teachers and educators to our day in the life of a drill sergeant. We leave at four o'clock in the morning, and we experience what it's like to be a drill sergeant for many of our parents who are our drill sergeants, and they're up at three o'clock in the morning. And so, you know, it gives us perspective on what these kids, because when the parents are up, the kids are up too, right? And then we have lots of celebrations. Check out our website, R2MillConnected is our hashtag, so we've got a lot of stuff going on, and I've got little surfsies for all of you all, and there's no excuse for you not to have on purple, some purple stuff in there on those bags for you. And also, many of you, last year, many of you came and you read to our students, so that's forthcoming. I'm hoping you'll be able to join us that last week during Spirit Week to come in and read to some of our military-connected students. Okay, I'm done. Come on.
Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the board. My name is Melan Carter, and I'm a ninth grader at Blythewood High School. We moved here in 2017 from Okinawa, Japan, and I attended Beaufort-Hambury Elementary. I remember my first day so clearly and being greeted at the front door with a big smile and hug from Ms. Footman, who was the principal at that time. When my parents decided to make this our home, I was glad. I have friends here and have been orchestra for four years. I am also a youth sponsor for new military students who arrive here. In this role, I welcome these new students, share my experience of moving seven times, and make sure they have a friend when they move here. Thank you for having me.
My husband's been in the Army 23 years. Our, we are, our four boys are very well-versed. They like to tell everybody that they were born in four different states. Connor's our oldest, he's 17. This was his 11th move in his eighth school that he's attended. Liam is 14. He's a freshman. This is also his eighth school, but it's only his 10th move. They both go to RNE, which they adore. We got here, and Ms. Carter got with us, Mr. Jones reached out and took my boys in, and Connor was able to transfer to the culinary program, and Liam is in the journalism broadcast program at RNE. As a military family, they just, they took us in and made sure we knew where we were going. This is Colin. He's 11. He goes to EL Wright. He's part of the law program there when we arrived.
I'm 12.
I'm sorry, 12. Oh, mom is in trouble. When we moved here, listen, I know, the magnet window was out, but they were able to help us get him the interview and everything, and he's doing well and ready to go to Disney this summer. And then our-
Happiest place on Earth.
Yes. And then our youngest is Keegan, and he comes with a lot when you're moving, but this is his sixth move and his fourth school. And so, yeah, fourth school. And so, you know, he's a lot, but Mr. Fred and Ms. Kelsey both helped us very much when we got here, so we did appreciate the warm welcome in Richland County.
Hi, good evening. This is my husband, Lieutenant Colonel Scotty Bowler. He, this is his 11th move, but because I don't adapt to change that well, this is only our, like, second really big move with the family. We have three girls. This is Cameron, who's one. This is Kalen, who is four. And our oldest is seven. She's currently at track practice. She's a second grader at the Center for Achievement, where she is excelling in math and reading. She's a second grader, but she's reading on a fourth to fifth grade level. We are very grateful for Ms. Carter and the support of Richland Two, because we moved here at the end of the summer after all deadlines had passed, all classes were full. We really did not know what we were going to do, and she swooped in and found us a place where our daughter is excelling and thriving. So, we thank you tremendously for your support, and I just ask and encourage that you all continue to support our military kids, not only in April, but year-round, because these kids have to pick up and leave their schools, their friends, and everyone they know, and insert themselves into a new environment. So, it makes it easier for our warfighters to focus on the mission of supporting and defending our nation when they know that their children are supported and placed somewhere where they can thrive. So, thank you.
Good evening, Richland School District Two. I'm Regina Cherry, and I'm the, 13th grade. I'm the activities director at Richland Northeast High School, but I'm also a military spouse. My husband will be retiring June the 9th after 28 years in the Marine Corps. And so, we've moved a couple of times. My, I have two children. This is Gabby that's beside me. She's at Dent Middle, and she's in the TLC program, and she's in competitive cheer, and she's a gymnast, and she's just thriving. And being so close to military, because I'm military, and I actually was in the military, I always leave that part out, because, you know, I was in the reserves, and that's important as well, but I feel such a big connection with my military community, and so at RNE, I make sure that when I see a military-connected student that I, I'm there for them to let them know that that support is there, because I know what it's like to go somewhere and be that new person on campus and just like a fish out of water sometimes, and just seeing that familiar face of someone that could connect with you definitely makes it that much better. I also have a son. He's a sophomore at Alabama A&amp;M right now, and he moved, so Gabby was a little fortunate. She had three, three elementary schools, and then she, we came here, and so she was able to concur and then go to Dent, and so she's able to have that connectivity with those students. But my son, he definitely had to adjust a lot, and so our military students are so, so tough, they're mentally tough, and so I'm so glad to be able to support them, and thank you to the district for offering your support, and Ms. Carter, who I had the pleasure of meeting, and we went to, I got stationed in Okinawa, Japan in 2010, 2010, and then that's when we met. And then we got-
You followed me here.
Yeah. Yeah, she, they came here in 2017, and then in 2018, I was here, and I was like, hey! So, yeah. So, but anyway, thank you, and go Marines.
Finally, our Coast Guard, we have Coast Guard, y'all know we have Coast Guard in our district, every branch we represent.
Well, first and foremost, hello, everyone. My name is Adrian Geiton, and these are my children. We have-
Nicholas.
Andrea.
And Andrea. They are nine-year-old twins, and they both attend Catawba Trail Elementary. I am so fortunate to be here, because with all the moves, my husband has done six, and we have done four. We've been up and down the Northeast. We've been trying to get California, but they won't send us. But I am very fortunate, R2I2 really holds a near and dear place in my heart, because us transitioning, my husband was coming off a ship, we were coming from Georgia, the twins and I were coming from Georgia when we transferred in, and this is the building where I was able to come to the career fair. And I met my principal here, I interviewed at some wonderful schools, but ended up taking position as the resource teacher at Catawba Trail. So to be a part of this community, to be a part of Richland Two, has just been so humbling. Open arms at our school. For my kids, they have attended Lake Carolina Lower, Upper, and I finally decided to let them come with me this year. But it's working out very well. As for my husband, he is a recruiter, because I know you're probably asking, well, why is the Coast Guard in the middle of South Carolina? But he is a recruiter, and he absolutely loves it. He gets to see all of our schools here in Richland Two, as well as all over the state of South Carolina and in Augusta, Georgia. So again, we thank you all so much.
Thank you. If you want to come and lead us in the pledge, if you have anything you want to say.
No, no, I just, I appreciate, I just want to give you a shout-out one more time, because I thank, thank you. You've helped a lot, she's helped a lot of my soldiers, so I have a battalion of roughly a couple hundred folks, and so does he, and she's helped all of our families get placement for schools, so thank you. And I'm a District Two grad, so I really thank you. Pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, this is a republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all so much. Thank y'all.
Thank you, Mrs. Carter, and all of our military families. Item six on the agenda is the consent agenda. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Trapp.
I move to approve the, to approve the consent agenda, which would be to approve the minutes from previous meeting, as well as classified employment releases and industry transfers and academic waivers.
Is there a second? The motion has been made by Mr. Trapp and seconded by Mrs. Porter to approve the consent agenda. Board, is there any discussion? And the motion is correct?
No.
Oh, what's?
It's not seconded, is that me?
Oh, it was seconded by Mrs. Porter. And the vote is six yes, one not present, the motion carries. Moving on to item seven, public participation. Before we begin, I will remind our speakers that each person is limited to three minutes and that our meetings are streamed live and recorded. According to policy BEDH, comments from the public should not include gossip, defamatory words, or abusive and vulgar language. The policy also prohibits in public session any expression of personal complaints about individual school personnel or any other person connected with the school system. Specific student or personnel issues should be handled through the appropriate procedures as indicated in district policy. Questions asked during public participation typically will be referred to a staff member for a response at a later time. Our first speaker this evening will be Kristen Bullington.
Good evening. My name is Kirsten Bullington, and I'm the parent of two children in the district as well as a teacher. I've been teaching science and engineering for 20 years, the last seven here in Richland Two, and I'm honored to be the current South Carolina STEM Educator of the Year. In last week's board meeting, a question was posed that I felt I might be able to help answer, which was how does DEI, Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion, impact academic achievement? I have presented on this topic a few times at national conferences, including the U.S. Department of State's Global Teaching Dialogue. Because I'm privileged to have students from all five high schools here at R2I2, I get to witness firsthand the positive impact that diverse working groups have on student achievement. My students, in collaboration with others, have been national winners and finalists in several design competitions, are about to have our first patent issued this spring, and have brought in over half a million dollars in grants and awards to this district. I think those are good indicators of success, and I'm convinced that it is harnessing the advantage of student diversity that has been the greatest contributor. But as a STEM educator, I don't want to just provide anecdotal evidence. What I have observed in my classroom is validated by meta-analyses of peer-reviewed research. The more diverse- of peer-reviewed research. The more diverse a paper's authorship, the more likely it is to be cited by others. I'm happy to send you the sources, but the prevailing thought is that we all have to work a little bit harder in diverse groups to overcome the differences and still complete the task at hand. And the positive impact of focusing on diversity is not just limited to academia. According to a 2019 study published in Barron's, gender-diverse leadership teams were more likely to outperform in profitability by 21% and value creation by 27%. Organizations in the top quartile for ethnic and cultural diversity were more likely to achieve above-average profitability, 33% more likely for diverse executive teams, and 43% for diverse boards. But optimizing the advantages that come from these diverse populations and overcoming group things do not happen magically. Teachers, students, and staff all have to be explicitly taught how to develop the skills that are known as global competencies: investigating the world, recognizing different perspectives, communicating with diverse audiences, and taking action to solve problems. It is these skills that STEM industries are telling us they are most looking for in future employees, and what makes having a Department of DEI so essential in a K-12 school district. We need assistance in ensuring that we are being inclusive of all of our students, and helping each one develop those 21st-century skills needed to make them competitive in a global market. So, how does DEI impact academic achievement? From what I've witnessed and what the research shows, by best preparing our students to be more competitive in South Carolina's global economy and beyond. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mrs. Bullington. Our next speaker is Stephen Gilchrist. And I'll confirm that he's not here. He did send a text message to me that he wouldn't be able to join us this evening, but I wanted to call his name to let him know... to let the public know that he wished to speak but couldn't make it. And finally, Mr. David Oberly.
Hello, board. I hate to hear Steven's not here. He's a much better speaker than I am. Keeping with the military theme, I wanted to mention, on just a little side note, Kenyon Bell, who was a graduate of Spring Valley High School, same time I was there, was recently promoted to two-star general in the Air Force. So, I think that's a great accomplishment for someone from Richland Two. That should be acknowledged. Also, I'd like to acknowledge the passing of Mr. Bill Green, who was a great administrator at Spring Valley High School. And were it not for my father keeping me in line at Spring Valley, you know, he would have had his hands a lot more full. One thing I want to talk about tonight is, we know what happened eight days ago in Nashville with the girl did what she did at that school. And in thinking about that, I'm really impressed with how the schools are in Richland Two. I want to acknowledge how great the schools are. The two schools I've been associated with, with my daughters, have had, you know, you pretty much, you don't just walk right into the school and do stuff. There's a lot of checks and stuff. So, I'm really impressed with how Richland Two handles our schools. I think we can always get better. I think there's a lot of things we can do to trouble-check and find things that are weaknesses. But as a rule, right now, from what I've seen, the schools are really well-equipped, and I think we're in good hands. So, I do hope we keep on that track of making schools even better than they are right now for safety. On the budget issue, I know the budget's coming up, and, you know, when we talk about a massive budget, sometimes a, for example, a $15,000 expenditure, which on its own would be, wow, that's a lot of money. But when you mix it in with millions of dollars, it seems so trivial. And I hope we treat even things like, you know, those items as important as they are. One example is like last year, I know this district spent like $60,000 to send 20 staff to Las Vegas. And the irony of the fact that this conference had a virtual option was not lawfully, when my daughters had to suffer through virtual school. So, these staff members could have, excuse me, could have done this virtual, but they chose to go to Las Vegas at a cost of $60,000. So, things like that. I'm hoping that going forward, we'll have a little more critique of these things, like, is this something that's needed? Are we going to get $60,000 in value back for sending someone to Las Vegas? Are we going to get a return on that investment? So, I'm hoping with the budget going forward, we can be a little more frugal about these dollars and make sure things are being spent wisely, and not let an expenditure get mixed in with millions of dollars. And on that note, if we're under fiscal watch right now, right now, I'm hoping that if anyone dropped the ball, that there's some type of, you know, admonishment or something, because we can't let this kind of stuff happen. It's embarrassing to have us in fiscal watch right now. So, if someone did drop the ball, I'm hoping there's something being done, so that won't happen again. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Oberly. Item eight, voting on executive session items. 8.1. Is there a motion?
Madam Chair.
Mrs. Porter.
I move to approve the student admission request into the district's adult education program for students one through 10.
And is there a second?
Second.
The motion has been made by Mrs. Porter and seconded by Dr. Scott. Is there any There's no discussion. Mrs. Porter, is the motion correct?
Yes, it's correct.
Board members, please vote. And the vote is six yes, zero no, one not present. The motion carries. Item 8.3, employment recommendations and certified releases. Is there a motion?
Madam Chair.
Mrs. Nash.
I move to approve the employment recommendations and certified releases.
Is there a second?
Second.
The motion has been made by Mrs. Nash and seconded by Mrs. Porter. Board, is there any discussion? Is there... Is there no discussion? Please verify the motion is correct.
That is correct.
Board members, please vote. And the vote is six yes, zero no, and one not present. The motion carries. Item 8.4, parent grievance. Board, is there a motion?
Madam Chair.
Mrs. Washington.
I move to hear the parent grievance in second executive session today.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made by Mrs. Washington and seconded by Dr. Scott to hear the parent grievance in our second executive session. Board, is there any discussion? There's no discussion? Ms. Washington, please confirm the motion is correct?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Board, please vote. And the vote is six yes, zero no, one not present. The motion carries. Item 8.5. Board, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair.
Mrs. Washington.
I move to hear the employee grievance at the April 25th board meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
The motion has been made by Mrs. Washington and seconded by Dr. Scott to hear the employee grievance at the April 25th board meeting. Board members, is there any discussion? Mrs. Washington, is the motion correct?
Thank you.
And the vote is six yes, zero no, one not present. The motion carries. Item nine, unfinished business, no action requested. An update on the 2023-2024 budget. Mrs. Gregory.
Thank you, Ms. Agostini. Dr. Harry Miley, Senior Chief for Finance and Operations, will provide an update on the 2023-24 budget.
Good evening, everyone. We... This is the best part of the year for us. It's a challenge. But so far, at least the state legislature has been moving along more rapidly than in the past few years. So, whether we agree with them or not, it's nice that they are acting quicker, which makes our job meeting our deadlines and the county's deadlines easier. So, we hope that they continue. What we know for now... Oh, I have the clicker. Thank you, Tony. What we... I wanted to... We don't know a lot yet. We have a long way to go. The House has passed a version. The Senate has all their deliberations. So, nothing is final, and we expect, as usual, quite a few changes. But we're hoping that next... This year is going to be a little easier in that the Senate and House versions aren't quite as far apart. That's one of the things that gave us a lot of trouble last year. But what we knew now is the House has approved $187 million in general funds and about $137 million in EIA funds to go to Classroom Eight. That's a little bit more than last year. We hope to see... Our first indication of those allocations from the state would be that we would be receiving some additional funds. But again, it's still early. They are requiring a $2,500 increase into the state minimum salary schedule. That means about... We pay above the minimum... Our minimums, teaching salary is above the state's minimum required teaching salary. But if they do pass this, it would mean we would raise at least up to, by $679, which would bring us up to, I believe, right about 43, 43.5 or so. So, again, we may do more than that, but that's what would be required if this passes the House and the Senate. We hope that there's some funds in there that are adequate to support that raise. Projections from the State Department of Education include funding mandated increases of employer shared benefits, which in short, we are the employer. So, our cost of a retirement system contribution is not 1% increase. It's another percentage point. 1% increase would be a piece of cake. 1 percentage point's about a 5% increase. So, we see that'll... We pay about 20, 24%, depending on the individual of retirement costs. So, that will increase our retirement contribution to their salaries. And then, health benefits. We will pick up 3.7% increase in health benefits. Again, these are typical state allocations and mandates. We will see how the funding... Usually, the requirement stays, and some of the funding may go away, but hoping right now that we are funded in that. We also, they passed in that bill, they're going to increase the teacher supply checks from $300 to $350. One of the things that they've done is, in terms of bus driver salaries, this is the biggest increase I've seen in the last 10 years. What they've proposed, and again, this is the House version. It can be subject to change, and we're not sure whether we're going to get the funding to do this. But they've passed a 20% increase to the minimum salary schedule of the bus drivers. And they've proposed a $2,500 increase in that, all steps in that bus driver salary. What does that mean for District Two? Again, this is not etched in stone, but that's... That would bring, if those two things are both adopted by the legislature and approved by the governor, and we had... Well, whether we have the funds or not, if they approve it, we will do it. It'd be... It'd bring our starting salary for bus drivers a little over $30,000 a year. That is excellent. The problem, of course, is that we're competing... The competition will still be the issue, because all the districts around us will also be paying more. So, again, it's great. It's good for our bus drivers. They deserve more, and we will see whether this all pans out at the end. But it's very good news. Like I said, the initial allocations look like we would get about eight to nine million dollars more from the state. Again, these are based on the House allocations, and that... We're a long way from there. But I wanted to give you the update of what we know today. The next stop is the Senate. Just to kind of a little rehash from last year, we're still in this transition from the old funding formula, the EFA funding formula, which was a fairly robust funding formula, copied throughout the country, until we kind of amended it to the point where it wasn't that effective. But we're shifting from the old funding formula, the EFA, to the new funding model, which they still don't have a name for yet. It's still called the New Funding Model. And it's... It is less transparent of how they come up with the numbers. Last year, we literally had... We tried. Shelley Allen did a miraculous job of trying to dissect how they got to the number that they indicated that we'd be getting. We're getting... We could not duplicate it. And my old science teacher always said, well, if you can't duplicate an experiment and get the same result, it's not a very rigorous experiment, because it's... You can't duplicate it. So, we couldn't duplicate it, but we'll see. We're hopeful that, like last year, we got additional funds through the state, and we're hoping that we do the same this year. The budget timeline, we're on a pretty good track right now. I'm hoping, again, that the budget bill doesn't get hung up in the Senate and the House like it did last year. If it moves on like we hoped it would, and it's not of lack of funding. The BEA raised their funding back, I believe, in their last meeting in February. Right now, the state legislature has a little over $700 million of recurring revenue to spend in this 24, 23, 24... Excuse me, 23, 24 budget year. That's a lot of money. Obviously, the state has great needs. There's also about $2.7 billion of non-recurring funds in a surplus. But again, we hope that the lack of funding doesn't slow things up. It's probably like last year, it wasn't necessarily a lack of funding. It was just a disagreement of how that funding should be allocated, which we hope will not slow us down that much. We will continue to review the revenue numbers from both the House, if there are any changes, and as soon as the Senate starts deliberating. I believe they're deliberating, starting in about a week or so. In fact, I think they're having no... I don't think they're meeting this year, so committees can meet this week, I believe. We'll continue to monitor those revenue projections from both the House and Senate. We'll... We've got a budget workshop with you on... We had it in parentheses, optional. We'll be here if you... If we do want to do that on the 18th. We're aiming to have the first reading by May the 9th. That's extremely optimistic compared for the last several years. But again, I think that's doable if the state moves along at their current pace. The county, we've gotten communication from the county, and their timeline is that they would like our budget request for the local version by May the 9th. I think we can do that, and I hope to be able to meet that, get our local government portion of the request to the county before May the 9th. As you can see, we've got a second reading, hopefully, by May 23rd. And then, the county council has their same... They have three budget readings. After we approve ours, they would give their budget readings three times. But again, that... Their approval is for the local funding portion. So, as we've done in the past, when they... When our numbers aren't finalized by the state, we get the county to approve that portion. It moves along their three reading process, and we can finish our budget process, our budget process, once we get the state numbers. Again, the reason why every school district's different, our neighboring Richland One gets about 35% of their funds and their total budget from the state. Most of them, they get a lot more in local taxes than we do. We get 35% of our money from the local government and 65% of our funding. So, every time we... You know, each school district's a little different. So, the state allocations are relatively more important to our total budget than Richland One and some other districts. Other districts are totally dependent on the state. So, that's what I've got right now. I'll be glad to answer any questions. This is, as always, this is a moving process, moving target and a moving process, and I'll be glad to update you as frequently.
Thank you, Doc. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Miley. Board members, questions?
Madam Chair.
Dr. Scott. One question and one request. The request is, once we get to county council, can you please make sure that we've given prior notice, so we can be a part of the conversation?
I can give you their schedule tomorrow morning. I have it in an email. I can give you all their planned readings. I can give you that tomorrow morning. And then, our progress and when we are appearing, I'd be glad to. Yes, ma'am.
That would be great. And also, when we appear before the board, because that's more important, when we go before county council. So, if we can... more important, when we go before county council. So if we can have those dates as well, with all of the readings, the three readings?
There's three readings, and you can go and I can go.
Right, absolutely.
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Absolutely. And then the second question is, I noticed when we were talking about the teacher supplies, that the House is thinking about giving $50 more and increasing that check to 350. But I just wanted to know, in case they did that, what would it cost the school district to bump that up to 500, where we also give an additional $150? Because we know as teachers, when we're going back to school, $500 is not a whole lot of money. Teachers spend out of their pocket all the time, and we know that's just what we do as teachers. But it would be great that if the House approves that 150, I would love to know what it would cost us to just give 150 towards supplies, so teachers can have an even 500. And then the other part with that is, and Dr. Franklin or Mrs. Gregory, you could help me out with this. I was told that instructional coaches and reading coaches are not a part of teachers, so they don't get that money. Is that correct?
It's the state.
Yes.
I think it's certified teachers.
Yes.
I believe certified, certified teachers.
It has to be classroom teachers, and I know a couple of years, they did not allow them to get that money. So if you guys could please research that for me, because I would love to see instructional coaches and reading coaches from our end give them that money because I was a reading coach before too, and I didn't get the money. So I want to make sure that if that law is still in place, that we do something, because I spent a whole lot of money in my pocket being a reading coach and could not get that money, although I was a certified teacher, but labeled as a reading coach, so I was not able to get the money. And I heard that now instructional coaches are not getting that money as well. So if you can check on that for me and get back, that would be great. And it can come in the board docket, that will be fine.
All right, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Board members' questions?
Madam Chair.
Mrs. Porter.
I know we're having a budget workshop, but prior to that, if there is any discussions and plans being taken place, I really want us to take seriously the teaching assistant salary bump. I see that they're talking about certified teachers and bus drivers, but I'd like to see that the teaching assistants aren't left out of that conversation.
We, we, we identified those last year and gave them an increase above what others were getting, but it's still, we all knew that it wasn't enough. And so I'm sure they will, will be back on the table in terms of the need that they, especially in light if the bus driver increase holds. Obviously, that's great for bus drivers. What it does, as y'all all know, is that it suddenly creates inequities of other groups, and, you know, it's, it's an ongoing process. And so that's, that's one of the benefits and the costs in terms of when they, when the state identifies a group and throws money at them, we've got to deal with the, the side benefits of those groups that don't get that money. And so we, we'll, I'm sure we'll be looking at it. And I will, I'm, I'm reluctant to do 150 times 2,300 in my head, so I can get that in an email as well. I used to be able to do that, but my, my staff won't let me do that anymore. So, but if that's everything, I'm.
Mrs. Washington, I believe, has a question that I do as well. Mrs. Washington?
Yes, so I had a question about the, you said that we already pay teachers above the state average?
Our minimum salary is above the state minimum schedule. Yes, ma'am?
Correct. So would we have the flexibility in how we're able to use the funds that come from the state?
I, I don't think so. I think we will be required to use those for teacher salaries, but I'll double check that as well.
Okay.
It depends on, it depends on the law language of the allocation.
Okay.
Usually, it's, some of the time, that was one of the nice things about the old EFA formula, is that it was the funding through the base student cost, and it would give us flex, give districts flexibility, more flexibility, and there's less flexibility, it seems like, as we're moving through this new process.
Okay. And then, so as the cost of living is increasing, are we still including in the budget to increase pay across the board?
We will, in addition to, to those things we've just talked about, so far, we've seen no language in the House version that says that we will not be giving a step increase, and, and which we, we, they have to specifically say no step increase this year for us not to. So at this point, we would be giving that step increase to all eligible employees, period. Yes, ma'am?
Period, classified and?
Yes, ma'am, classified and certified.
Perfect. Good. And then my last question, I've heard a lot from some principals and leaders about their needs for additional FTEs for things like interventionist, for behavior, academic. Have principals shared their needs?
We've, we've reached out to all departments and schools, and we're getting that information back now.
Okay.
And we, we expect that to come, I mean, not that specific thing, but that's the kind of input we need, and we will gather it all together. I think I've mentioned before, frequently, those requests add up to two times what money we have, so everything can't be funded. But we go through that, and fortunately, finance doesn't prioritize those things, we just keep track of the money. But obviously, they need to be prioritized, and we can't do everything.
Mrs. Porter.
I'm sorry, I forgot. There was a change from the old funding model to the new funding model. I just want to know, will the magnet ratios affect, affect us since the funding is changing based on student-teacher ratio?
And it's, it should not. They did not last year. And again, of course, the new funding model refers to, to student-teacher ratio, but it's not any existing student-teacher ratio. It's a formula that they use. It's not relevant for our actual, or any district's actual student-teacher ratio. It's a funding mechanism that they, they decided to use.
And I have one final question, because we know this will come up when the headlines read in the newspaper that the state just passed a $2,500 base increase, but why are we only giving $679 in Richland 2?
Yes, ma'am. That happened last year when the governor came out and said, oh, we're giving $4,000 raises, and they didn't fund them. And so, except for the lowest level of funding, except for those districts that were below that minimum. I think, I just add numbers, I'm not a policy person, but I would think there will be a lot of pressure and encouragement for all districts to adopt a similar minimum increase in their, in their salary schedule, whether it's 2,500 or something. But I, I think that, one, is that message needs to be real clear, and again, it's dependent on what the funding level is from the state. Last year, when that $4,000 came out, if you remember, it wasn't funded, and it was about a $12 million, would, would have resulted in a $12 million deficit in our budget, even if we had received the maximum millage increase, it was still about a $6 million hole in our budget. So I, we, we always incur, I'm happy that the state encourages and passes increases for teachers, they all deserve it, but it's difficult when they don't fund it as, as, according to how they, how it's said in the newspapers and others, and how the, how the, how the leadership at the House and Senate talk about it. But we will, you know, we all know they need more, we all know we want to give them as much increase as possible.
Thank you. Any other comments? Thank you so much, Dr. Miley.
Thank you.
Item 11, new business, excuse me? Oh, excuse me. Okay, I, I need my glasses because I'm reading it, but I don't know why I said 11. But item 10, new business action requested, 10.1, approval for the new board attorney. May I have a motion?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Trapp.
I move that the board retain the legal services of White and Story to provide the board with legal counsel regarding employment matters and general board business.
Is there a second?
Second.
The motion has been made by Mr. Trapp and seconded by Mrs. Nash. Board members, discussion?
Madam Chair.
Mrs. Porter.
Can you clarify for the public what the, specifically what this attorney would be coming in for?
As it states in the, the motion to advise us on employee contracts and general counsel.
Okay, so that is just for, it's short term or is it long?
There's a purchase, I believe it's called a purchase order through June 30th of this year, 2023.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Board members, please vote.
I move that the board retain the legal services of White and Story to provide the board with legal counsel regarding, regarding employment matters and general board business.
Mr. Trapp, can you confirm the motion as posted?
Change it to, let's see, general counsel. No, unless, yeah, employment matter, counsel regarding employment matters. Yet to provide counsel regarding employment matters and counsel on board mat, general board business.
Board members, please vote.
There's an extra E. There's an extra E at the, at the end. I don't know if you want to do it in post.
The vote is five yes, one, or zero no, one not present. Mrs. Nash, did you vote?
Yeah.
Good.
It's just an error, sorry.
So six yes and one abstention, the motion carries. Moving on to item 11, new business, no action requested. Mrs. Gregory.
Yes. Dr. Franklin, our deputy superintendent, will share three policies with us, revision proposals. The first two are legislative updates, and then the third will be included as part of our strategic plan. Thank you, Dr. Franklin.
Thank you, Mrs. Gregory. Madam Chair, members of the board, I'll begin with policy JLCE, first aid and emergency care. During the 2022 legislative session, the General Assembly made changes to the do not resuscitate eligibility requirements. Previous language provided that no person under the age of 18 could request nor receive a DNR order in South Carolina. Board policy echoed state law and prohibited district employees from following the terms of DNR orders. The amended state law no longer prohibits minors from receiving DNR orders. Therefore, district administration recommends revising the language in policy JLCE to reflect such. Madam Chair.
Board members' questions? No questions. We can move on.
Policy JQ, student fees, fines, and charges. Utilizing debt collection agencies to collect or attempt to collect meal debt is not a practice in Richland 2. During the 2022 legislative session, the General Assembly passed legislation that now prohibits school districts from using debt collection agencies to collect or attempt to collect debts on a student's school lunch or breakfast account. District administration recommends revising the language in policy JQ to reflect the current law, which is also our practice.
Board members' questions, comments? Dr. Franklin?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And lastly, policy IHC, this is a policy that we're proposing for adoption, proficiency-based credit courses. For about 20 years now, Richland 2 has a limited number of proficiency-based courses offered to students. These courses are also referred to as competency-based courses. Proficiency-based courses allow students to work at their own pace to demonstrate requisite skills and knowledge needed to earn high school credit without being restricted to the 120-hour seat time requirement. The proficiency or competency-based option is already referenced in district, I mean, board policy, policy IKF, and accompanying administrative rule IKFR. With an increase in student and parent interest in seeking flexibility and additional learning options such as proficiency-based courses, district administration recommends the board adopt a standalone policy that addresses proficiency-based credit courses. The draft policy is the School Boards Association's model policy with one recommended insertion from district administration. Madam Chair.
Board members' questions, comments? Thank you so much, Mrs. Franklin.
Thank you.
Dr. Franklin. Item 12, agenda items for the next meeting. Mrs. Gregory.
In the April 25th meeting, we'll have our call to order, approval of agenda, executive session items, student admission requests, appeals, breach of contracts, employment recommendations and releases, our inspirational moment, pledge of allegiance, and our consent agenda, where approval of the consent agenda minutes from the previous meeting, classified employment releases and in district transfers. We'll have our first public participation session, voting on executive session items, and then unfinished business, action requested, the three proposals, the three policy proposals that Dr. Franklin just shared. In unfinished business, no action requested, legislative update, an update on the 23, 24 budget, update on capital improvement, and update on ESAR. In the new business, no action requested, a revision of policy BID, board member compensation and expenses, revision proposal policy BEDB, board agenda, approval policy BBBD, board member removal from office, and then a report on school designations. We'll have our draft agenda items for May 9th, second public participation if needed, board and superintendent comments, and a second executive session if needed before voting on those items and our adjournment.
Thank you, Mrs. Gregory. Board members' comments? Moving on, item 13.1, public participation. We completed that in the first session. So moving on to 14, executive session continued. Do I have a motion to go into executive session? Madam Chair.
Mrs. Nash. I like, I move that we recess public session and convene an executive session for the purpose of a discussion of parent grievance and receipt of legal advice regarding employee contracts.
Is there a second?
Second.
The motion has been made by Mrs. Nash and seconded by Dr. Scott. Is there any discussion? There's no discussion. Mrs. Nash, can you please confirm the motion?
That is correct.
Thank you. Board members, please vote. And the vote is six yes, one abstention, the motion carries. We will now convene an executive session. May I have a motion to come out of executive session?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Trapp.
I move that we adjourn the executive session at 10:08 PM and we reconvene a regular session.
Is there a second?
Second.
The motion has been made by Mrs., Mr. Trapp and seconded by Mr., Mrs. Porter, excuse me for coming out of executive session. Is there any discussion? There's no discussion. We'll wait for the motion to be posted and then vote. If there's no discussion, we'll wait for the motion to be posted and then vote. Mr. Trapp, is that correct?
Yes.
Board members, please vote. And the vote is seven yes, zero no, the motion carries. Moving on to item 15, voting on executive session items, the board will not be voting on any executive session items this evening for the second executive session. Item 16, board and superintendent comments. We will start with Mrs. McFadden.
Thank you all, have a good night.
Mr. Trapp?
Yes, I'd just like to make one quick comment, a thank you to all the, especially for the inspirational moment we had tonight. I really have a special place in my heart for military people, and I know it's a really hard life to move around like they do, and I just wanted to say thanks to all of those, and it's a great honor, I think, to honor them this month, as a month of military child. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Trapp. Mrs. Washington?
I want to say thank you to every employee, classified, certified, full-time, part-time, that serve Richland Two every single day. I advocate and will always advocate for fair pay and thriving working cultures that cultivate employee growth as well as employee development. I am super grateful to serve in this position as a trustee, and let me tell you, it is not easy. The emails that we receive, the phone calls, advocating on behalf of students, parents, and employees. I've been in your shoes as a teacher, teachers, I have been in your shoes, district office staff, working in the district office as well. And let me just say, I am very passionate about making sure that our students are educated appropriately every day, just like everybody else is in this district. Yes, I understand that there are decisions that we make that everybody may or not agree with, but I want the district office staff to know and understand that you are also valued as well. I want to thank our financial service and HR department for making quick, fast decisions to make sure that all employees receive their bonus pay, including each and every one of you. These funds will be used to support families. I've heard teachers say that they're starting college funds, they're taking much-needed vacations, they're making extra payments on student loans and much more. But while the pay incentives are great, I am looking to administration to ensure that our culture is a culture where teachers and employees can thrive, and conditions reflect the caliber of employees that we attract and serve every single day. Thank you so much, Ms. Kelly Carter, for all that you do, your presentation and your loyalty to our military families, and as well as Mr. Fred, and your partnership is greatly appreciated. Thank you so much for introducing us to some amazing families this evening. You will always have my support in what you do. God bless each and every one of you, and God bless Richland Two.
Thank you, Mrs. Washington. Mrs. Porter.
I want to say I'm grateful for all of the school librarians, happy school librarian day, and for everything that you do. I know my little ones absolutely love their school librarian. Also, a message from the South Carolina Caucus of Black School Board Members, there is a essay scholarship for seniors that I will share on social media, and I'll send it to Ms. Gregory to share with your school counselors, and the due date for that will be on April 29th, so it's right around the corner, so look out for that. Also thankful for our military families who make the choice to attend our schools and all of the service that you provide for our country. As a military child myself, I relate to you all, and I really enjoyed our inspirational moment. Hooah!
Thank you, Mrs. Porter, Mrs. Nash. Okay, so I've been waiting to do this for, I think, now a couple of weeks, because I said I was going to do it when we had a shorter meeting, but that didn't work. So, I want to say thank you. I got to judge the Miss Ridgeview Pageant a couple of weeks ago. Thank you to everybody there. I also got to meet one of our international teachers, Mr. Palmery. So great to meet you, and the kids did so well, the young ladies were phenomenal. Also want to thank our safety and security committee. Thank you to everybody, Captain Rhodes was there, I mean, there were so many people there, Dr. Scott was there, and to the student Kendall who came and gave such great insight. I want to thank her as well, because she gave us just some really great things to think about. Blithwood SIC, I had an opportunity to be a part of their SIC meeting, and it was so great to do that. We talked about internet and cybersecurity with the Attorney General's cybersecurity educator, and that is some great things that we have to share with the safety and security committee. And then finally, I think it's finally, if you have children, or you just want to come out and be a part of an egg hunt, well, you have to be a child to be a part of it, Grace Life is hosting the R2I2 here, the Easter Egg Hunt. It usually says it's going to rain, but there's always, like, the Lord just does something great, and it doesn't rain until after. There'll be food trucks, and I am going to be the host, standing in for my husband. So I may not be as good, but I will be there. Thank you, guys. And as always, thank you all for staying so late and being here with us.
Thank you, Mrs. Nash. Dr. Scott.
Just like to say happy National Assistant Principal Week. Thank you for all the amazing work that you do, the care and compassion that you show to our students, our parents, our community, and you rock. Thank you so much. You guys have a great night.
Thank you, Dr. Scott. Mrs. Gregory.
Thank you, Ms. Agostini. I want to say great inspirational moment tonight. You know, we are the largest military-connected district in the state, and really do appreciate our military families, and we'll be celebrating this month as the month of the military child. We were very fortunate to have commanding General Kelly from Fort Jackson last week visiting us here at R2I2. He took a tour, talked to the students, teachers, he even judged a cookie contest, but he looked at the electric cars, went through all our programs, and we were just so happy to have him here and are fortunate to have the relationship that we have with Fort Jackson and the continued partnership. And I want to thank Kelsey Carter and Fred Henley, who is at every single board member, for that great partnership as it continues. And we're looking forward to more at Blithwood Middle School for their fifth designation as a school to watch school. Also want to say thank you for all our staff members who work so hard every day to make this district run, and hope you have a great spring break next week, a much deserved break.
Thank you, Mrs. Gregory. I too want to thank Mrs. Nash for bringing Kelsey Carter here and the military crew. It was great to see them, and they were truly inspiring and very energetic. Also, a special thank you to Kristen Bullington and Mr. Oberly, who came out to speak to the board during our public participation. I really appreciate when the public and our teachers in the community come and share with us their thoughts and give us some direction or share with us what they're thinking. And finally, just have a great spring break. Have a great evening. Thank you. Whoops. Do I have a motion to adjourn? I was ready to go.
Madam Chair.
Mrs. Porter.
I move that we adjourn the April 4th school board meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
I'm going to say Mr. Trapp, so the motion was made by Mrs. Porter and seconded by Mr. Trapp to adjourn the meeting. Is there any discussion? Board members, please vote. Hand vote, all in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed, the motion carries. There are seven yes, zero no, the motion carries. Have a great evening.